Okay, well it's like it's 4:30, it's about for you to get your meeting started.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. At this time we have a special presentation that we would like to hand out tonight. We want to thank Ryan, Zane, Brad Anderson, Twenty Seven Supply, Winkell, which they also too, not just for helping us with the bus garage, but many things you should do for Scott County schools. What you have done is very appreciative and it shows that the goodness of this county, it shows that your heart is for our kids, it's for our schools, and the plaque is not enough. We've got to want to thank you for allowing us to have the usement for a bus garage. And with this thing, I would like to present you with the plaque in a token of our appreciation. Thanks very much. You guys can go.
Appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you all, appreciate you.
And Ms. Abbott does all have the present, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board? If not, we'll go to the principals. Who's the first one? Mr. Cash, you want to go first?
I don't have a whole lot. We're having a great start to our school year. It's really gone a lot better than I could have hoped for. We've started our tear groups already. We've listed plans are being turned in. Just, I could tell that some of the teachers training from the summer, they've implemented into their classroom, so that's, I'm sure Miss Keaton would love to hear that. So, we've had a lot of changes and everything has been really positive and it's really going great. And we're definitely trying to keep all our houses clean. So, that's what we're working on. We've got a new mower, so I appreciate Mr. Blakely and Mr. Hollard for the new mower. Rumor is Mr. Blakely's working on a wheelie mower for it. But I know that's really going to help, help us out a great deal. It's already been put to use. We had our back to school night Tuesday. Mission of Hope was also there and we had a huge turnout. Well, I'm not going to lie, we had seven parents last year. And this year we had over 100. Students was probably over 200 students. So, and I'm already thinking about, you know, having to make it even better next year. So, it was a great turnout for our back to school night. Football is here, ready to go. We have a scrimmage tonight at Birchfield, jamboree, and I'm sure Ms. Stanley will talk about it when she stands up. That's Saturday at 6:00 at Scott High. And then our first game is next Thursday, the 17th, at home against Colefield. That starts at 7:00. And then our early release day is, will be Wednesday, the 16th, and walkers and riders will leave Fairview at 12:30. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Stanley, I overlooked you back there. I couldn't find you.
We'll say something.
Scott told me I had to stand up. I guess I'm...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Same thing as Scott said, it's been a really busy, exciting time to get schools started. We've been tweaking our schedules a little bit. We did have both the RTI times worked into our schedule and most of the principals can tell you that that takes a little bit of maneuvering just to get that RTI time worked in. We'll be starting our initial benchmark testing next week for grades two through eight, and then later this month we'll do grades K and 1. I want to mention our August Students of the Month. They're Haley Norris for grades K-2, Kylie Slaven for 3-5, and Katie Royston for the middle school. My congratulations to those three, happens to be three ladies this time. They're great kids, great students. We have the Boy Scouts up there Tuesday night for their initial signup. We were glad to see them. On Tuesday, August the 22nd, we'll have Pizza with Parents Night for our kindergarteners. If you want to have some pizza and meet our kindergarten kids and parents, you're welcome to come out August the 22nd. They'll be there by the clock. And if you've never had a night with a group of kindergarten kids and eating pizza with them, it's a fantastic night. It's a great time. So, you're welcome to come and join us. Tonight from 5:00 to 6:00, we, in just a few minutes, we will start our Mission of Hope backpacks. They'll be there and we're anxious to see them. They always do a great job and our kids love to see them. Then we're going to have our back to school celebration immediately after that. So, we're looking forward to that tonight. As Scott said, this Saturday is the football middle school jamboree. And you have a copy of the schedules up there at your desk. And we'll start pictures at 5:00 and the schools' times for pictures are on that schedule and the game times are on that schedule and who plays whom, that sort of thing. They will be playing two 12-minute quarters with clock running, which is the same thing they've done in years past. We will have concessions, of course. We do have T-shirts, football jamboree T-shirts. There'll be $12 at the gate. Admission is $3 for school age and up. County employees come in free as long as they've got their badges. And I encourage everybody to bring that badge because sometimes other people working with the gate, they don't recognize everybody across the county. Of course, we always have some new teachers. So, you know, it's a lot easier if they just have that badge there. At the middle point of the jamboree, we'll have the competitions for longest punt, kick and pass, and fastest back and fastest lineman. Those will be in the middle and they'll get plaques for the winner of those. The last thing I have is, of course, Monday afternoon, August 21st, is the solar eclipse. We're actually really, really excited about that. Our students and teachers have some great things planned. They've developed their theme for that and they've borrowed from Star Wars. Their theme is going to be See You on the Dark Side. So, we're really excited. We plan a lot of fun, super cool activities for that. So, if you want to come up and join us for that, you're welcome to. And other than that, unless you have questions, that's all I have. Thank you. You do have a calendar up there too. I gave you football, jamboree information and also the calendar for August for our student. Thank you. When you need to, Ms. Smith.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Goodman.
Well, first off, I want to thank my faculty and staff for doing an outstanding job getting everyone in place. That beginning of school year, new school year is always very, very hectic. I appreciate technology, Greg and Leeta, especially for their patience as we make all these adjustments to schedules and things like that. So, I appreciate everyone, their hard work. Mission of Hope will be at Huntsville Middle and Huntsville Elementary tomorrow with their backpacks. Of course, they've already talked about the jamboree this Saturday and we thank Ms. Stanley for all of her hard work. Boy Scouts will be here on August the 14th and then they're wanting to meet with parents and have their first meeting in the cafeteria. Early release day, of course, they said is on the 16th. We want to remind the middle school parents that special ed pickups, boys and girls club buses will leave at 12:00. First load of buses leave at 12:15 and our last load is not leaving until 12:40. Our first football game is with Birchfield on the 17th. We will be observing the solar eclipse on the 21st. We did send out rental permission forms today. We will have to have those before the 21st if your child's going to participate. So, we need those turned back in as soon as possible. Our back to school night is on the 24th from 4:00 to 5:00. We invite all the parents to drop by and meet the teachers. We have a football game that night against Soldiers Memorial, beginning at 7:00. There's no school on the 25th. That is fair day. So, we want to remind everyone of that. Girl Scouts will be at Huntsville Middle on the 29th at 2:00. We will host Lake City on the 29th. And again, our ballgames start at 7:00. Our school pictures and football pictures are on the 31st. We always try to get that out to the parents so they know when those pictures are going to be. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Tanya.
Well, as happened at Fairview at Birch, we also too had our open house. We had that the day before school started. Kind of sent that all call out to parents, let them come in with their students, especially those brand-new students, so they could come in and see their teachers and see those classrooms. And we had about 200 parents there that night. So, we had a really good turnout. So, that was the most we've had in a very long time. And just appreciate everybody coming out to doing that. As Scott also said, we also have our first football scrimmage tonight. It will begin at 6:00 PM at school next Thursday. Again, as Ms. Goodman said, we will be playing our first home game against Huntsville. That will begin at 7:00 PM. Next Wednesday, August the 16th, on that early release day, Mission of Hope will be coming to deliver our backpacks. So, that's going to be a very busy day, but they're coming that morning to do that for us. Been looking at school enrollment. Our total school enrollment thus far is 554 when I checked that about an hour or so ago. And I know we're monitoring that pre-K. I have right now 38 pre-K four-year-olds and 13 pre-K three-year-olds in that program. And I know we're still waiting to that August the 28th cutoff date because we definitely do not want to lose any of our pre-K classrooms in the county. So, we want those students to be enrolled. On our planning, we began planning and finalizing ideas, like they said, for solar eclipse day on August the 21st. We too will be sending out those permission slips and having those nice glasses for those students to wear. But we went a little different route. We didn't do Star Wars. We centered ours around food. I know that's crazy. But ours is Sunny D and Moon pies. So, we're doing that and I'm, oh, it's not here. We're not going to tell her that. So, that's what our centered around. So, they're excited about doing that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Yourself?
Well, we really appreciate being able to do the orientation this year with pre-K and K. That really helped and it helped being able to start a little bit later with those guys because it helped with our parking lot issues and getting everybody ready to come in. So, that was really great. And I think the parents really liked that too, to be able to meet everybody and go down to the classrooms in a little more relaxed atmosphere. I think, Mr. Bailey, that was all right, maybe?
I wanted it.
But we're still in phase N for pre-K and K. Their full day will be actually, not a full day, the first day with all the students there is the 16th, which is the half day for us. On August the 11th, we have Mission of Hope, which Ms. Goodman has already said, we share that. But also Barnes and Nobles coming to share what they have to share with teachers. They have discounts for them. But it's happening all throughout August for back to school. And they will have specials that they're going to talk to our teachers about the same day when Mission of Hope's there. So, they're coming to see us. August the 14th, like I was going to say, we have Boy Scouts also visiting. We have our back to school night on the 15th when we also have our family reunion night. And the Boy Scouts will be there the afternoon and in the evening to meet with the parents then. On our early release day, we're going to be doing the Jason Foundation finishing of the suicide prevention. The 18th, we have Kona Ice. So, all the kids will be real excited. Y'all come over and get you some ice with us. It's really a lot of fun. 21st, not only the solar eclipse, but we will also be doing July birthdays that day. Back to school for Ms. Goodman, we will, we put that on our signs and make sure that we're doing all calls so Ms. Leeta will know that we both do not have those together. So, that will be a little confusing for some. Girl Scouts will be visiting with us, with Ms. Goodman also. And August birthdays we will celebrate on the 30th. You have a calendar up there. So, anything y'all want to come out and visit with us, please do so. We would enjoy having you out. That's all I have unless you have questions for me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Madam.
I don't really have a lot to add to the calendar that I gave you at the work session. I will just remind you that on August the 17th, it will be our back to school night from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. Our first football game is also that night at 6:30. I do want to thank Mr. Blakely and all maintenance for their hard work this week. We've had some issues arise at school from one thing to the other. And they were right there and took care of that for us. And we appreciate that. I did try to have our attendance meetings this week, trying to work on our attendance for better attendance in the school year. We are going to have a huge kickoff celebration at the very end of August because September is attendance awareness month in our schools. So, we are trying to meet with parents, trying to encourage them to get their kids to school and schedule appointments after school times and things like that. So, we're hoping that we'll have a little bit better success than absenteeism this year. So, that's all I have unless you have something for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our Hollander back to school celebration is going to be starting at 6:00 PM on Friday, the 25th. That's fair day. So, it seems a little odd, but that is right before our first home football game. So, we got a little unlucky with the calendar this year. We have a lot of home events on days that were off. But we know that parents and people are coming out anyway for that home football game. So, we're just going to have all of our teachers are going to be out there. We're going to do a little bit of celebration. We're going to try to do some different things there on that night as well. We are still waiting on our final EOC data. The state sent something out the other day and said that it was released. We still have not received that. So, the data that we have is still preliminary. We are waiting on that and expecting it any day. Once we get that and have that final breakdown and we're able to do the official final comparisons between, between our achievement and state achievement, also our improvement and growth from the previous year. I'll do an entire spreadsheet on that and I always send that out to Mr. Hall and Ms. Keaton. And I'll send that to you all as well. We're expecting that at any time. According to our preliminary information, it looks very promising and we are really, we think we've seen a lot of improvements. So, we're excited to get that out. On our early release day, we will be meeting with teachers in their first ACT PLCs of the year. That was something that we started last year. This is our third year doing PLCs with our teachers. The first year we focused on literacy. Last year we focused on ACT. And it was such a rewarding experience for all of our teachers and they really felt like they got a lot out of that. But we are continuing that theme into this year. We just feel like we've seen so many results from that. So, we're going to do that. I've heard a rumor that we might have a little escape locked-up game played. So, if they, you know, we definitely know that if they don't get out of the escape room, they're going to be there for work on Thursday. So, some of them might get to stay all night. Our, speaking of ACT, our ACT rewards program, we do that with our seniors every year. We take their junior testing that they do at the end of the year, their junior year, and then that jumps them into a reward program their senior year. Last year, with that senior group that we had, which you all know was such an exceptional group, that we had those seniors that graduated, we had 49 students who were able to make it into that rewards program by the end of the year because they can continue to qualify for that throughout their senior year. I finished the information on that today and I'm ready to present those cards to students tomorrow. And I'm excited because we are starting this year with 49 students. We ended last year with 49 and we're starting this year with 49. We have a, the state is giving a senior retake opportunity for the ACT in October. And so, we know that we've got a lot of students slated to retake that test in October. And we know that's only going to bring improvements. So, we're very, very excited about, about that. We feel like that is directly related to some of the work that we've put in. And it's nice to be able to see that return. So, we're excited about those improvements. The parking lot is complete. We did get those final numbers painted there. And so, the parking lot is complete. Spots have been assigned and everyone is getting settled. It takes a day or two to find your new spots. So, if you're out there and you see somebody just turning in a circle, it's okay. They'll find their spot in a few minutes. But we went out today and checked and had most of those settled. But by Monday, everyone should be settled in their spots. And we're crossing our fingers that we're not going to sell out of spots. We had to do some rearranging yesterday in order to make some more student spots. This is the first time since I've been in this position that we've even come close to selling out spots. Now, I'm getting ready to tell you why that is. And that is because our enrollment is over 820 students right now. And that's actual feet-on-the-ground enrollment. We went through and did a verification. Mr. Merly can tell you. I've probably aggravated him for the last couple of days telling him something's got to be wrong. There's, we're missing some kids here that need to come off. And we've combed through those numbers. And there are actually about 825 students right now feet on the ground. Now, as you all know, our attendance has been at about anywhere between 92 and 94 percent pretty steadily for the last little bit. So, that amounts to a lot of people every day. And we have a lot of older students in those upper classes, which equates to a lot more drivers. So, again, all good things, all good things, but just new, few new problems that we have found solutions to. So, we just ask for patience in, in that. And for our calendar, we keep an online calendar. I am going to send each board member an email invitation to that. When you get it, it will just simply say, "If you want to join the SHS calendar, click this." And you'll click a button and it will automatically add our online calendar to your email calendar. So, you can see it as I update it. So, if I go in and put something, it will be a live update. But we also send all of those reminders out through our website and social media and things like that. There's a lot going on. So, it's hard to keep, keep up with it in lifetime. But I will send each one of you an invitation to that. So, I'll be expecting that in your email. That's all that I have.
That's you. You guys are making me tired.
Thank you. We're exhausted. And I told Mr. Merly a minute ago, I would come up with some things. I really wasn't sure. All I knew, I was coming back tomorrow. I wasn't sure about anything after that.
Thank you. As most of y'all have heard, but now I know y'all have questions. We are going to school on the day of the solar eclipse. As you can see, the exciting things that our principals have planned. With that being said, we have purchased along with, should also thank Ms. Paulette here with her gracious donation with this, also too, purchased 3,500 glasses for every student, every teacher, every faculty member, every person in this system will have a pair of glasses for the solar eclipse. That includes you guys too. So, that way if you want to go somewhere to enjoy the eclipse, you'll have a pair of glasses also. There's a lot of exciting things that, like I said, our school's a plan. So, if you get the opportunity to go be with them, that would be great. Good luck for you guys. And when we, you do have reservations at the Oppenland Hotel for the TSBA convention center. We got on it. It was a challenge, I will tell you that much. Because phone lines were down that day. I spent hours. And then Misty also had to help on that day. So, what we did have, everyone had reservations at TS, for the TSBA convention. August 16th, be our first early release day. Next Wednesday, buses leave Huntsville Middle 12:15, Scott High School 12:30. As you've already heard about our enrollment, right now we're sitting at 28 17. That's 41 more than last year's average. That's 61 more from the last day of school. So, we also aren't seeing another trend in our enrollment. I think we got a caller today if someone wants to enroll three more. So, you know, we look, our enrollment is up. It's a good thing. And we just hope that that trend continues. You do have a packet for the insurance. You had some questions in our last month about contributions as far as what's going locally and what's now getting to the state. I will say that we did receive, we received an increase from the state in January on those services later. Do you have any questions with that? Feel free to ask me or Ms. Amanda in that situation. That's all I have. But y'all have any questions for me?
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Can I say one thing about the maintenance?
Yes.
We, I was at Fairview. They were just sharing some books with me. And I got a call from Mike Silcox, called at 3:00. And he said, "We've got a big problem down here at Robbins." Said, "None of the commotes can be placed." So, he said, "You might want to call Rutherford." So, I came by here and got Rutherford's number from their last invoice, which was over $1,000. And I called them just to kind of make sure they would be available. But I held off waiting to see if those guys could do anything. They went on down and I was down kind of behind them. And we had had a, that's a six-inch drain line. And somebody had, at least parts of it, somebody had let a part of a lid, broken-off lid, get down in there. And they managed to get that thing open. We were able to retrieve that lid and stick. So, we hope that we've taken care of that problem down there. But, you know, they were down there past 4:00 working, digging, trying to get, trying to get that bit done. And we got it done. And so, I think they probably saved us at least $1,000 right there. And they didn't complain. They worked hard. And I just wanted to kind of break on the maintenance crew just a little bit for that. They, you know, they kind of went above and beyond there. And we think that's a thorn in our side that's permanently removed now. So, I just wanted to make the board aware of that.
And we're very thankful.
Yeah.
That would have been a rough day.
Well, you know, when that's, when a thing like that hits, you got to start thinking about calling off school for one school. And that's, that's a big deal. And so, we're really thankful that that worked out.
We appreciate that. We really do. Okay, item 7, adoption of the agenda. In accordance with Board Policy Number 1.403, the Scott County Board of Education should adopt an agenda of all items to be active on during the regular monthly meeting of Office 10, 2017. May I have a motion to approve the Office 10, 2017 agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any discussion? Wade Donnell, real call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Item 9A, consent agenda items. In accordance with the Scott County Board of Education Policy Number 4.403, the Board of Education may include routine and non-controversial items on a consent agenda, which may be adopted by a single vote without discussion. Any item on the consent agenda may be removed and placed on the regular agenda for further consideration at the request of any board member. May I have a motion to approve the items listed on the consent agenda as follows. A, approval of the minutes for July 13, 2017. B, approval of the June bills and financial report. I'll make that motion. Second. Any discussion? Wade Donnell, real call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Item 9A, approved handbooks. The Scott County Board of Education needs to approve the changes, revisions to the district and Scott High School's handbook. May I have a motion to approve the changes and revisions for student handbooks for the district and Scott High School for the 2017, 2018 school year as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Your second? Any discussion? Wade Donnell, real call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Item 9B, Children's Health and Maintenance Plan Agreement. This agreement will allow the school district to share summary information collected from students' records to be used to conduct research and seek funding from private foundations. No personal and/or identifiable information will be released under this, under this agreement. May I have a motion to approve the agreement regarding Children's Health and Maintenance Plan, CHAP, for the 2017, 2018 school year as administered through the ALQ program? Motion. Second. Any discussion? Wade Donnell, real call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye. Okay, item 9C, the Children's Center Contract. Board approval is necessary to continue the contract between the Children's Center of the Cumberland to provide child abuse education policies in all the schools in Scott County. May I have a motion to approve the contract agreement between the Children's Center of the Cumberland and the Scott County Board of Education for 2017, 2018 school year at the rate of $25,000. I'll make that motion. Second. We have any discussion? We'd like to recognize Ms. Peggy. I think she is. We appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I enjoy doing it. It's very rewarding. I love being in schools.
Any more discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, item nine-B, Clinch Powell Head Start Program. Board approval is needed to continue the contract between the Scott County School System and the Clinch Powell Educational Corp. to provide meals to Head Start students at Birchville Elementary, Fairview Elementary, Huntsville Elementary, Robbins Elementary, and Winfield Elementary. Payment for these meals will be based on the Head Start Program's monthly USDA reimbursement. May I have a motion to continue the contract between the Scott County School System and Clinch Powell Educational Corp. to Head Start, Early Head Start Program for the provision of meals for Head Start students? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
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 Aye.
Policy Number 3.400, Student Transportation Management. Policy 4.210, Credit Recovery.
Policy 4.301, Interscholastic Athletics. Policy Number 4.00, I'm sorry, 4.600, Grading System. Policy 4.700, Testing Program. Policy 5.200, Separation Practices for Tenure Teachers. Policy 5.201, Separation Practices for Non-Tenure Teachers. Policy 5.203, Recommendations and File Transfers. Policy 5.600, Staff Rights and Responsibilities. Policy 5.701, Assistant Teachers. That's it.
Could you read that again?
I'll just wait for that, John.
I second.
Do we have a motion?
We have a motion.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear all of it. Any discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
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 Aye.
Any discussion?
Wayne O'Grill call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Out of nine-G, accept donation. The town Huntsville is donating a strip, donating a strip of land behind the bleachers at Huntsville Middle to the school. May I have a motion to accept the land donation for Huntsville Middle School from the town Huntsville? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Could I add something here, Mr. Hall, if it's okay, the chair up? And if the, if the people that made the motions could accept this as well. I do have the survey in the little description. Actually, we've got the deed prepared and we're ready to execute that. It will certainly be a benefit to the Huntsville School, but there is a four-hundred-dollar survey bill. And since the county, or since the school board is not paying for the property, I wonder if the school board could be responsible for the survey bill. If we could add that and to pay the survey bill in the amount of four hundred dollars to that resolution, if that's okay?
We gotta make the motion.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion. She made it, but she'll do it.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Hall? Can I ask one question here?
Yes.
We asked this, not this board, but the school board actually gave that land to the town of Huntsville that that whole thing is sitting on anyway. That was all part of the Huntsville School property.
We give it back.
Now they're giving it back. It cost them four hundred dollars.
Well, that's just make the leap, Doc.
Well, if they don't want to pay it, then I'll take care of it, so.
No.
Is there any more discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
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 Aye.
Out of nine-I, fresh fruit and vegetable budget. Huntsville Elementary has been approved
to continue with the fresh fruit and vegetable program. May I have a motion to approve the fresh fruit and vegetable budget for Huntsville Elementary School for the 2017-2018 school year? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Out of nine-J, grant teachers tenure. In accordance with Scott County Board of Education
Policy 5.117, the Board of Education can grant tenure to those teachers who have exhibited satisfactory performance as a teacher of honor, recommendation of the director of schools. May I have a motion to grant the following teachers tenure as recommended by the director of schools. Fairview Elementary, Lauren Davis. Huntsville Elementary, Kelly Miller. Scott High School, Keisha Bass, Tony Duncan. Winfield Elementary, Tina Henry. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Okay, item nine-C, the Children's Center Contract. Board approval is necessary to continue the contract between the Children's Center of the Cumberland to provide child abuse education classes in all the schools in Scott County. May I have a motion to approve the contract agreement between the Children's Center of the Cumberland and the Scott County Board of Education for 2017-2018 school year at the rate of twenty-five thousand dollars? I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have any discussion? We'd like to recognize Ms. Peggy. I think there she is. We appreciate you.
Well, thank you. I enjoy doing it. It's very rewarding. I love being in schools.
Any more discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, item nine-B, Clinch Powell Head Start Program. Board approval is needed to continue the contract between the Scott County School System and the Clinch Powell Educational Corp. to provide meals to Head Start students at Birchville Elementary, Fairview Elementary, Huntsville Elementary, Robbins Elementary, and Winfield Elementary. Payment for these meals will be based on the Head Start Program's monthly USDA reimbursement. May I have a motion to continue the contract between the Scott County School System and Clinch Powell Educational Corp. to Head Start, Early Head Start Program for the provision of meals for Head Start students? I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Wayne O'Grill call.
Well, Linda, you've got conflict here.
I can't believe it.
Ms. Smith?
Four hundred dollars.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
And while we're on the subject, if it's permissible, okay, Mr. Hall, Ms. Abbott, we are going to have to buy a new system for Huntsville Middle Gym. Last, one of the last storms pretty much fried it and it's all, we can't get new parts for it. We talked about it, we have an estimate of about $73, $7400. But, but yeah.
He's talking about a fire alarm system.
Okay, any more discussion? Wade Young, roll call.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Item 9L, Surplus Property. Pursuant to TCA 5-21-118, the Board Policy Number 2.403, the Scott County Board of Education may declare property as surplus and authorize the Director of Finance to sell the identified surplus property at a public sale. Proceeds from the sale of surplus property shall be deposited back to the department from which the property originated. May I have a motion to declare the following surplus property and authorize the Finance Director to sell the surplus property at a public sale? 62-10R22.5 tires and 4-11R22.5 tires, 11-micellanic small truck tires.
Second.
Any discussion? Wade Young, roll call.
Mr. Silcox? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Okay, item 9M, Hall and Fay Banquet. Approval is needed from the Board of Education to sponsor a table for the Boys and Girls Club Hall and Fay Banquet. May I have a motion to sponsor a table at the Boys and Girls Club Hall and Fay Banquet on August 17th, 2017, and cost $400?
Somebody better make a motion with that, because our board may be recognized.
I'll make that motion. Right there, Lady Sharp, don't laugh.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Wade Young, roll call.
Linda, you've got conflict here.
You can't blame me.
Ms. Smith?
$400.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Okay, item 9N, Director of Schools Evaluation. Approval is needed to present to Director of Schools with his evaluation. May I have a motion to present to Director of Schools with his evaluation?
Make that motion. Second.
And each of you have a copy of that. Any discussion? Wade Young, roll call.
Mr. Smith, Ms. Abbott, you said what? You have a copy.
You have a copy of the evaluation, it's in that green folder. Any more discussion? Wade Young, roll call.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Silcox?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Sharp?
Aye.
Ms. Kidd?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Okay, before we go to 9O, Mr. Silcox, do you have anything?
Mr. Hall, do you? Yeah, I need to speak, I'm sorry. I like to address all of them, about school bus turned up for a bird stream. By the church house, aren't a lot of them made bigger last year, Bill, you've been there. Mr. Hall, or, or, Mr. Bo has been there. You got a bus driving on it this year and it can't turn there. He can drive the bus, the morning last year it couldn't. My brother Sam, he's driving the bus this year and he can't drive a bus there and turn it. I drove the bus to turn it, I drove the flat nose bus and turned it, turned it, but Mr. Bo says it can't be turned.
Safely.
But it can be.
It can be turned, not safely, not within the condition it's in right now.
Why can't it be turned safely?
If they're starting to.
It's turned there for 35 years.
Where you guys have went and pushed off the bank and put it down the hill without any kind of reinforcement?
It never had no reinforcement before, Mr. Bo.
I'm sorry. It's within walking distance?
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Yes, sir.
It's not until I get there in Long City, can I have a back lesson?
We've measured it numerous times.
I don't log out, can I see the bank?
Okay.
Can Mr. Sexton do anything, force record on that also?
They gave us a quote last year, I don't, I gave that quote to you. It was a lot of money, it was correct.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna address something here. At the foot of the mountain, the bus turn goes into Bull Creek. It's a shorter turn right there than it is up there at that part of the Henry Drive label that the bus turn was. It's shorter, it's a whole lot lighter, going into Bull Creek than it is in that bus turn. You can go measure any one of them, and I can show you how I'm right. You got a field, you got a dead church about way across where you get into the field. But if you need a barrier back there, I'll put you a barrier.
What's wrong with the driveway? We had a perfect turn on us.
The driveway is, is where my son parks his vehicle. He was parking in the yard last year and you wanted the driveway for the turnaround.
Sir, that's your option.
What's wrong with the bus turn?
It's too small.
It's bigger than the driveway.
It's starting to cave in. We had the bus in there, wanted the driver to report.
No, your driver here is one started driveway in the driveway.
Yeah.
Mr. Hall, we'll work on that.
All I'm asking is the bus be turned, that's all I'm asking.